Council meeting. Okay, I guess I have to say this again. Welcome to the City of Inchester, uh, virtual council meeting. Uh, October the eighteenth virtually. Uh, prayer, um, do we have anyone to give prayer? Uh, Reverend George Williams, would you like to give us prayer?
Will do, will do.
Okay, go ahead.
Let's pray. Father God, we come back now, know the way we're leaning on your everlasting love. Realize, Father, that you as the Creator and Maker of the city of Inchester, Father, we ask that you continue to wrap your arms around us. And, and that we can bind ourselves together with love, unity, and strength. Most of all, Father, keep your everlasting love around us as we continue to make solid decisions and make this a great city of love that we live in. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, Pledge of Allegiance, Troy. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Wimberly is absent tonight. And therefore Mayor Protim Howard will chair the meeting. Mayor Protim Howard.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Washington.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam, Madam Clerk here at my home in the City of Inchester, Wayne County.
Thank you. Councilwoman Washington.
Here, reporting remotely from my home, City of Inchester, County of Wayne.
Councilwoman Wa-
Yes, virtual attendance from my home in the City of Inchester, Michigan, County of Wayne.
Councilman Chisholm.
Present, reported virtually from my home in Inchester, Michigan, County of Wayne.
Councilman Shaw. Please unmute yourself.
I'm here in the City of Inchester, I'm sorry.
Okay, Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Okay, and I'd like to say, because I didn't say this previously, I am virtually from my home in the City of Inchester. Okay. Uh, approval of agenda?
Full move, Madam Chair.
Any support?
Full support.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley.
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
And Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have five.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, presentations, uh, Cherry Hill Family Center Project. Are they on a call, Troy?
I'm not sure, um, Councilman Williams, I mean, Chisholm, if you could direct them into, uh, either raising their hand or unmuting themselves so that I can identify them. Yes, uh, for the presentation tonight, Cherry Hill Family Center Project. If there is a representative on the line, you've joined us by Zoom, please use the raise hand feature so that we can recognize you. If you joined us by telephone, please use star nine to raise your hand so that you could be recognized. At this time, Madam Chair, Clerk Chapman and Mr. Seaton, I don't see any hands raised to be recognized, so they might not be with us.
Okay, we're gonna move forward until, and if they do come on in, we're, we dare be allowed to speak. Okay, consent agenda.
So move.
Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley.
Is this for the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, I'm an, I'm a nay. I'm a nay.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
And Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
It's four to one, Madam Chair.
All right then, uh, any, uh, boards and commissions? Any, any, uh, current boards and commissions that you wanna, um, put on any boards?
I just have a comment, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I had sent over, uh, to the city clerk, just some, you know, corrections for two of the different commissions, um. I didn't know if anybody else had an opportunity to or not, just for the ones that they know or familiar with, because we had talked at the last meeting about trying to update it and straighten it out.
Okay. Do anybody have anything else on that? Okay, when did you send that, uh, Councilman Chisholm?
It was either la- that, uh, evening on October the fourth or the very next day. Um, the clerk did reply and said that she had got it though, but I just didn't know if anybody else, uh, had, had jumped in to just assist.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Protim?
Yes.
Um, um, I did look at what Councilman Chisholm sent, and, um, I think I suggested to him that we might, as council people, look at everyone in our districts and make contact with them and see if they're, you know, just to assist the clerk, to see if they're still interested or if they're still on, because some of those people have been, uh, have not been active in quite some time, and I believe the policy states that three absences, and I don't know how that works, during COVID, make, means you are no longer on that board. So if it's something we'd like to look at by just contacting the people in our district on these boards and see, um, if they're still on, if they're still interested in the update phone numbers and things, so we can make contact, that would be something we could do if the council is agreeable.
Okay, I like that idea. That sounds good if the rest of their council is agreements with that. Okay, um, want to, and if there's no under discussions and boards and commissions, we're gonna go right into new business. Okay, Madam Chair.
The first item for new business is a resolution to consider approval of the East Side versus West Side Car Show.
Okay, it's been a motion, um. Do we have an approval of this?
I make a motion.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, wa- was it, I didn't, it might have cut out on my end, I didn't know somebody had moved for it already.
No.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, agenda item A with respect to the letter that Chief Riley submitted today.
Okay, do I have a support?
Yes, support.
Support.
Okay, any discussion on this item?
Okay, everyone is familiar with, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protim?
Yes.
Everyone is familiar with what Chief Riley's letter stated, because initially, um, this says that there will be no city services needed, but he would only approve it if certain stipulations were met. So we're all aware of those stipulations, and the clerk did advise that the people had agreed to it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, is any other discussion on this item? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Watley.
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have five to zero.
All right, motion approved. Item B?
Nine B is a resolution to consider approval for a trick or treat block party for kids on Lexington Court.
All right, wish us pleasure.
Full movement, Tim.
Okay, any support?
Support.
It's been moving support, uh, any discussion on this item? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Watley.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have five to zero.
Okay, motion carried. Item C?
Item C is a resolution to consider approval for the second annual Halloween block party on Oakwood Street.
Full movement, Tim.
Support.
Okay, it's been moving support, uh, any discussion on this item? Okay, none. Uh, okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley.
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have five to zero.
Okay, motion carried. Uh, item D?
Item D is a resolution to authorize DPS Director as a representative of the city to make an application to the Wayne County Department of Public Services for necessary annual permits to allow temporary closure of certain local and county roads.
Full movement, Tim.
Any support?
Support.
Okay, any discussion on this item? Okay, see, uh, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley.
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
And Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
Madam Chair, that's five to zero.
Okay, motion carried. Item E?
Item E is a resolution to consider authorizing the DPS Director as a representative of the city to make an application to Wayne County, County's Department of Public Services to occupy the right of way of Wayne County roads on behalf of the City of Inchester for utility repairs and replacement.
Okay, wish your pleasure.
Full movement, Tim.
Any support?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved in support. Any discussion on this item? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley.
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, that's five to zero.
Okay, motion carried. Uh, we're on item F?
Item F is a resolution to authorize DPS Director as the representative of the city to make an application to the Wayne County Department of Public Services to occupy the right of way of Wayne County roads on behalf of the City of Inchester for sanitary sewer and water maintenance inspections, repairs, and routine maintenance, sidewalk repair, and replacement.
Full movement, Tim. Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, um, Madam Clerk.
One moment, please. Councilwoman Watley.
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
And Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
The next, uh, Madam Chair, the vote was five to zero.
Okay, motion carried. Item G?
Item G is a resolution to authorize the sale of one vacant parcel located on the south side of Cherry Hill Road between Metal Belt and Division Street for fourteen hundred dollars.
Wish your pleasure.
Full move.
Do I have a support? Okay, it's been moving, supported, and discussion on this item? Okay, um, Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't sure if I heard Councilwoman Watley or Washington support that motion.
That was Watley.
Who's Councilwoman Watley? Score.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Watley.
Yes.
Madam Chair, that vote was five to zero.
Okay, motion carried. Item H?
Item H is a resolution to authorize the sale of four separate vacant parcels that are adjacent, located on Spring Hill Street between Pine and Andover for one thousand dollars.
Full movement, Tim.
Okay, it's been moved. Any support?
Or?
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any, um, anyone like to talk about anything on this agenda item? Okay, hearing none. Uh, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley.
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the vote is five to zero.
Okay, motion carried. Item I.
Item I is a resolution to authorize the sale of one vacant parcel located on Andover Street between Washington. It must be at the corner of Washington and Andover for five hundred dollars.
Okay, wish your pleasure. It's been moved. Any support? Any support on this?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? And none. Uh, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley.
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
And Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the vote is five to zero.
All right, thank you. Motion carried. And the last item, item J?
Is the resolution to consider approval authorizing the sale of one vacant parcel located on Moore Street between Carlisle and Beach Streets for two hundred and fifty dollars.
Full movement, Tim.
Some move has, uh, support?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion on this item? All right, hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Washington.
Yes.
Councilwoman Watley.
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilman Shaw.
Yes.
And Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, the vote is five to zero.
Okay, motion carried. We are now going into public participation. Um, Councilman Chisholm, can you, um, tell us how many we have in, uh, chat for, for public participation?
Yes, uh, we are at public participation. For those who have joined us by the Zoom application, please use the raise hand feature so that you could be recognized. For those who have joined us by telephone, please use star nine so that you can be recognized. Once you are unmuted, please state your name. For the record, you have one minute to address this body. At this time, Madam Chair, we have two hands raised.
All right. First caller.
Hi, good evening. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, this is Octavia Smith.
Hi, how are you?
Mayor Protim and Council and everybody. Just want to, I got three things I gotta send quick. First of all, for the Inchester Task Force, we'd like to thank everyone who came and supported the Inchester Farmers, Inchester Task Force Farmers Market from May through October. Uh, we appreciate you guys. We look forward to doing it again next year. Um, from Western Wayne Family Health Center, um, just to let you know that we are still there for all of your medical needs. May that be dental, behavioral health, primary care, um, pediatrics, and, uh, thanks to Chamber of Commerce. You know, we are closing out our calendar ads right now. So if you did not get your ad in, if you call me at three one three three zero zero one zero five seven on the Inchester Chambers phone, I can still get you in, so call me as soon as possible. And I did speak to, um, State Rep Joelle Jones today. He said to let everyone know he loves you guys, and he thanked you for all of your prayers, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. I have one question for you, Octavia.
Yes, ma'am.
Will you guys?
I didn't hear you.
Booster shots? Once, uh, will you guys be giving out the booster shots for those who have to take it?
We will be giving them out. They have not given us a date yet, but yes.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you so much.
Once we get that information, I will send it to, um, Mr. Seaton so he can let everybody know, okay?
All right, all right, thank you.
No, thank you.
And next caller, Mr. Little?
Yes, my name is Omar Little. I would like to state that David Jones knew that Mayor Wimberly filed a false affidavit under the penalty of perjury, and he committed perjury. And David Jones failed to prosecute Mayor Wimberly because all he cares about is a contract. He doesn't care about upholding the Constitution. Mayor Wimberly's Halloween costume should be a Wayne County Jail jumpsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more, Councilman, uh, Chisholm?
I don't see any other hands raised at this time, Madam Chair.
All right, closing public participation. Um, City Clerk, do you have anything for us tonight?
I just want to remind everyone that we are two weeks, uh, away from our next election, which is a Taylor School bond, and it only affects, um, again, three precincts, which is precinct one, two, three, one, and three, two. Um, the process is going well. We, the responses for absentee ballot is going well. Uh, we're just looking forward to wrapping it all up on November second. And that's all I have for today.
Okay, um, I do ha- I do see, uh, Mr. Bivins with his hand raised. Can you unmute, unmute him for me, please? Mr. Bivins? I'm not sure if he's unmuted.
He's unmuted.
Okay, I'm not su- hello, Mr. Bivins?
Hi.
Hi. That's okay.
Um, Mayor Protim, Council, uh, public audits and, uh, viewing audits. I would just like to inform you guys that starting tomorrow at Inchester Road in Annapolis, there will be one-way traffic going north and south. Excuse me. Going north and south, it would be detour signs up and the road will be closed due to the water main break we had up there, uh, a month ago. Now that we have to repair that road, replace that road according to Wayne County specs, so it will be detoured for the rest of this month. So I did email you guys a flower, a flyer today. I just wanted to announce it to the public. So when you come in northbound, I believe the center lane will be open, so there will be no left turns at Annapolis and Inchester Road because it will be one-way traffic on the uh, right side of the street. Going north and south.
Okay, do you, do you, uh, it's starting tomorrow?
It's starting tomorrow. Uh, they, they will be out putting, uh, closing the road off at seven thirty in the morning.
Okay, do you know how long it'll last?
Till the end of this month.
Till the end of this month, okay.
That, that's tentative. It might go long. It just depends on, because we got a saw cut. You all saw how large that break was. Excuse me. It has to be saw cut out and that concrete and all that. Had to replace, and I'm running a new water main across that road.
Oh. Okay, all right.
All right.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else want to say anything on this matter?
And if any, Mayor Protim, if anybody have any questions or concern, they could always call my office at three one three five six three nine seven seven four, and then my staff will be able to address their questions.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, s- city treasurer?
Um, yeah, so we've just, uh, completed our first quarter for the fiscal year twenty-two, and, um, you know, it's, it's kind of like, if we don't have quarterly budgets, we don't account for things that may happen on a quarterly basis. So because we have an annual budget, we just basically have to go with the percentages, and right now we should be at about twenty-five percent of our revenues and our expenses, um, if we're just gonna go on the annual budget, which that's what we're working with. Um, so right now for our revenues, we're at about twenty-nine percent, which is good. So we're a little above twenty-five percent overall, and then for our expenditures, we're at about twenty percent, which is under twenty-five percent, which is also good. So, but, you know, a lot of that revenue was front-loaded, um, because we do collect our tax revenues early. So we have to keep that in con- into consideration, and then also, you know, this is included, including the ARPA money as well. Um, so that's how we're looking overall as a city. Um, in terms of, as a department over at the Parks and Rec, um, our revenues are about forty, forty-six percent, uh, where we, you know, should be at about twenty-five percent, so we're way above our twenty-five percent of revenues, and we're at about twenty-six percent on our expenditures. Um, so, you know, we continue to go in that, in that path, we should be fine there as well. Um, and we haven't even done a lot of bookings, haven't had a lot of tournaments and things like that, so we're looking for revenues to even be higher than that, so. So that's looking good. And then we also have, we have, um, the Wayne County Health Department is at the, uh, the rec center uh, from twelve to seven, Monday through Saturday as well, giving out shots, just so everyone can be aware of that as well.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we into Mayor and Council's communication. Uh, Councilman Shaw?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just have a couple of things. Uh, Road Patrol, Road Patrol on Avondale and Harrison Street. And I just want to encourage everyone, if you see something, say something, uh, speak up and let, uh, someone know. If you need to call nine one one, call nine one one. If you need to reach the police department, call the police department. Well, speak up and say something. And also, Madam Chair, I wanted to find out the, uh, trash RFP. Do we have any kind of communications or any flyers that went out uh, concerning the trash RP? I know it was talked about on last Friday that something was going to be, uh, put onto the website or for RFP for, uh, trash services. So I would like to get an update on that as well. And also, I wanted to, um, commend Mr. Aaron Sims from last week, I mean, last council meeting, I get it, didn't get a chance to say to him, keep up the good work for the, the work that he's doing with the Malcolm X Building, uh, keep on keeping on. And last, I have, uh, Madam Chair, uh, this is October Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I want to, uh, give thumbs up to all of my breast cancer survivors. And I just want to leave them with this quote. Always remember that your present situation is not your final destination. That the best is yet to come, and that's all I have, Madam Chair. That the best is yet to come." And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Councilman Chisholm?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, two things, just wanted to ask the community to keep in your prayers, the family of Reginald Canty and the family of the Reverend Everton Minigoo. They both passed away, um, during this month of October. Funeral services haven't been had yet. Also, the mayor of Lathua Village, Kelly Garrett, lost her son, um, to Battle of Sicko Cell his this past weekend. So keep them in your prayers also. I wanted to ask the city attorney, David Jones, if his office had received the robocall policy that I had submitted to everyone, um, just to make sure they had it to review and revise, um, of course, before it comes before us in the future for a vote. Is Attorney Jones still with us? And if not, I'll just-
I, I'm here. I'm here. And, and we did, I did see your email, uh, at the end of last week, and we'll be responding shortly.
Okay, thank you. Um, my last thing, Madam Chair, and to my colleagues and the citizens. Uh, recently, I underwent a preventative eye procedure, um, because my eyes, I have a cornea disease and one of them began to fail me double the rate. So I just want to express to everyone, um, because I underwent this personally and it's been going for a couple of years till we finally got to this position of some sort of resolution. Take care of your eyes. Um, we first started the process with me getting glasses and, oh, you just need a minor prescription. But as I pass street signs every day that I know I was reading and was unable to read them with my glasses on, I continue pushing. And we found out there was an underlying condition that needed some type of care. So I know a lot of times as public officials, we may or may not speak on public health matters and encourage others to do X, Y, Z. So I just want to make sure I express that sentiment, not only to my colleagues and those that are reviewing, but the rest of the community as well. Because once, as my elders say, once it's gone, it's gone. I can honestly say that you guys were right because I'm experiencing that. Thank you, Madam Chair. You're the floor.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Watley?
Uh, yes, Mayor Pro Tim, I just want to, uh, reiterate some requests that I made, um, to the administration the last time, and that's the, uh, the report, um, deciding, uh, or telling us what in-house building department as to outsourcing the building department, the cost there. Um, I wanted a year-to-date, uh, expenditure on Nerds Express. Um, I also, uh, wanted to know what our general fund balance was and, uh, the Parks and Rec's budget was. I didn't get any of that information, uh, the last time, so I'm just restating that. And also, I'd like to ask the, uh, Council, I know we're in Zoom and things are not, we have a new normal now. But I was wondering if we were going to, uh, in light of the information we received this week, if we were going to do an evaluation on our attorney services. That's it.
All right, um, okay, Councilwoman, uh, Washington?
Yes, um, I would just like to, uh, send a special thank you to, um, our DPS Director Jerome Bivins. Um, Saturday morning, I called him. There was a down wire. Um, some kids were playing around it and he got right on it. They came and corrected the issue. So I wanted to just say thank you to, um, Director Jerome Bivins for getting on that. Um, also, um, I would like to send a special shout-out to, um, Aaron Sims and, um, a couple of, um, brothers from, um, our neighborhoods, of course, um, Inksster own workers. Um, they've been out cutting grass and, um, they joint forces with the Department of Public Services to keep our grass cut and the city clean. So I really appreciate them cutting the house and lots from Middleville to Henry Rough and Dan, also from Michigan Ave to Cherry Hill. So I really appreciate that. Good, uh, great job, fellas. And that'll be all for my update.
All right, Councilwoman, uh, Councilman, uh, Williams?
Yeah, I would just like to, um, um, send our collective prayers, uh, with the Colen Power family, uh, on his passing. And, and that's all I have tonight, Madam Chairman.
All right, um, I do have, um, uh, this is pertaining to, um, our budget, our revenue and expenditure report. This is to the treasurer. I did send you an updated, uh, well, I'm sorry, I sent you an email of a old, uh, old revenue expenditure report that we used to get. Did you receive that?
Yes, the, the most recent one that I sent to you guys is, uh, that in that same format.
Okay, because the one that I'm looking at right now is missing things on there and I'm not sure why. Uh, we are missing the end balance.
The end, you said you want-
Um, incumbent and incumbent balance year-to-date. And some of, and on this report, I guess, some of the permanent salaries, um, what has been paid out since July is not on here. So I can't follow this because it's not, it doesn't have the correct numbers in here to follow. So is there a way that you can get us an updated one and resend it to us?
Yes, I will, um-
With all the information that we've-
Yes, yes, I will. And, um, the reason for the, some of the salary information not being in there is because of the change to DM payroll. So what I'll do is take the information from there, copy and paste it and turn that into Excel spreadsheet. And then I'll be able to get you the full picture. That's what I'm gonna have to do and I'll do that for you.
Okay, so is something going on with payroll? Why is it not showing it?
I mean, because we're not in, we don't do BSNA for payroll. Now we do DM payroll. So we have, since we have an outsourced payroll, then the numbers are generated there and not through BSNA. So it's just more work for me, but no problem, I'll do it.
Okay, because see, this is the thing. I'm not trying to be funny. Um, we can't do, as councilmen, um, we can't do our job unless we have the correct figures down here. Because when we get this monthly report, it tells us each, what each department is spending on a monthly basis. And if they go over salary, go over overtime, and if we don't have that, then we can't, this, this report is not, is useless to us because it's not giving us the accurate figure.
Yeah, I, and I agree with that. So I, I'll be sending you an update. Now, the numbers I just gave you, and I do have the fund balance as well, and those numbers that I gave you does include all of those, the salaries and everything. And so, you know, those numbers are accurate. But you, but you are, um, absolutely correct that, you know, you would like to have those salaries out, put those salaries together in the Excel spreadsheet. We just can't generate it off BSNA because it's not generated in BSNA anymore, so.
Okay, so will we be getting the incumbent and incumbent balances and year-to-date balances as well?
Yep, I can add that. That's just a click of a button. So I can add those, but, but I'll, I'll, I know exactly what you mean with the salaries and I'll, I'll input that myself.
Okay, um, and another thing too. I was looking at these pages and I'm not sure, um, I guess every, different treasures have a different way of doing things, but it seems like it's more pages, so something is being added. Um, I guess I, you know, I just have to go through it and see what's different from the old, you know, old way, way the old treasurer used to do things. Now, I know at the beginning of our term, we had talked about when Plant Moran came in and gave us an update on our finances. Um, I did reach out and ask, when was Plant Moran gonna come? Since you finished the fourth, first quarter, um, I would like to see them come in and give us a presentation on where our balance is. So you think that's possible?
Uh, yeah, yeah, definitely, yep. Um, you know, so basically, uh, I have those numbers that I just gave you, those percentages include that. So our change in fund balance was, you know, we're like one million, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Um, but you know, I could send this guy, send this to you guys.
Yes, okay. And we were also, I'm not sure if this, if this, uh, what every council, but for me, I would like for Plant Moran to come in and give us a presentation of where just our finances are. And give us, because they show us graphs of where we at and, you know, if we, when we were supposed to be cutting in our last, uh, budget, um, we haven't seen that. I'm not sure if anything has been cut from the budget. But I think it's time for them to
Right.
To give us a presentation. So I'm not sure if my council people right now would like to set a date to have them come before us. If that's the pleasure of everybody, but I know for me, that would be good.
Yeah, well, I, I can definitely do that, but also, you know, I'm gonna, those are the things that I'm doing as well is, you know, looking at the different, um, departments and where the budgets lie. So pretty much the same thing that I'm telling you, because the information I get, I share with them. So they're gonna tell you the same thing I'm telling you, but I can definitely let them know that you would like to have them on.
Okay, um, and that's, uh, and now I'm talking to my council members. Is that what you guys would like to have? Because-
But, but yeah, you have also, Tim, if you want that for Plant Moran to come in, you gotta find out how much money it's gonna be for them to come in and do that. Okay.
How much money?
They're not, they're not coming in and doing it for free.
Okay, well, that, that's not a prob, that's not a problem. If, if, I mean, that's what the council would like. That's what we being, that's what we do. We haven't had any, we haven't had any problems. Wait a minute, we haven't had any problems with Plant Moran coming in and giving us a, a update on what our finances are.
Yeah, that won't be-
Now, we've had that the first time. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I don't think that's gonna be a problem. Okay, thank you.
As Brother Green, they don't charge you to come in and do that? Um, I mean, we, we already have a relationship with them, so I don't think, you know what I mean? I think we can say something like that, but I, let me work on that, please. Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it's been, I don't think it's been a problem of them being paid. I mean, we paid, uh, um, the building department to come in and do a presentation on, uh, um, the, uh, what, what was that? That was supposed to be over there on Middleville. And I know we paid them to do a presentation. So I don't think, I think everybody would be in, we should be in census to, to want to know what our finances is and get the graphs that we normally get from Plant Moran. So that's why I'm asking for them to come. If that's the census of the council, if you guys want them to come in to do a presentation. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes. Um, definitely. And I believe all you have to do is look at whatever our contract is with Plant Moran and see if that entails things like that. But I have never heard since I've been on him, them charging to come in and tell us what we need to know with finances are concerned because that's their job.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. So we are in agreements with that. So do you guys wanna, uh, set a date for them to come in?
Well, I, I, I don't have no problem with it, but I, I would like to know what the cost factor is gonna be because, um, I, I, I understood that the mayor and some of the council people indicated that, that, that the amount of money they were making had been cut. Okay? So I, I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know-
Well, the amount of money that they were making, if I'm correct, that they was cut, it was because of something that they had to do, um, extra. And that was, and that is some of the services, and that was, um, through the state of Michigan. But we, prior to them doing extra workforce and getting paid from the state of Michigan, prior to that, it used to come to give us updates on our finances.
Well, you know, that's not, they don't, I don't, I don't think they, no longer it's the services of the state of Michigan now.
No, no, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying to you is prior to them doing extra services for us in the state of Michigan, state of Michigan paying, they still used to come up and give us a presentation of what our finances are. So I think that, uh, and so I would like the census of the other council people that we can set a date tonight to have them come in.
Will we be able to, um, I'm sorry, um, Chair, will we be able to just have the, uh, Madam Clerk actually probably put us something together to pick like two days? Because, I mean, if we gonna pick, uh, day-to-day, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, I'm just saying if you want to pick a day-to-day or you want to give them, give them a week and we can email the clerk and then she can set it up. But I would like, I would like the census of all the council people because we need to know this. I mean, it's the first quarter, so, you know, the first quarter is over. So we really need to know where our finances are and where we at.
Yeah.
So that's what we do. We just-
I can tell you, I, I mean, I just told you the numbers. I got them from her.
I understand what you're saying, um, to the treasurer.
We have a good relationship, so I don't think it'd be a problem.
What I'm saying to you is that we're looking at these reports and there, and there are some things on here that, it doesn't really matter if you're giving us the reports or not. We still have a, a right to have our Plant Moran, who has worked for us for many years, come and do a presentation.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be a problem. Okay, I don't think it'd be a problem.
Well, what, well, what we do is eat, we can just email, everybody can email the city clerk with the dates and we can have it set up.
Okay, Madam Chairman, tell me where we at on the audit then, the audit? They, they normally sort of been in, I know that they have moved it to January.
You know, normally the audit that comes in in November, I think they're just getting started with the audit. Normally we would have-
Started the audit yet.
Right, normally, right. Normally the audit would be at the end of the year, when before, you know, when we used to get it, but things have been, you know, delayed.
And that's one of the reasons why the fund balance is gonna be a little skewed because your beginning fund balance is not gonna be accurate because the audit isn't complete yet. So your ending fund ba, balance is not gonna be accurate, but, you know, it still can be a, a good estimate.
Okay, I didn't know, uh, I didn't know, uh, presentation was, um, was depending on what the audit said. I didn't know that. But anyway, what we can do is, I'm just urging my colleagues because we all want the same thing at the end of the day. Excuse you? No, you out of order. You out of order.
You shouldn't make statements that you don't, that nobody said.
I, I'm asking for the consensus. What you can do is email the city clerk the dates that you are available to have Plant Moran come in and do a presentation for us and our residents. And then we, and then what's, whatever the consensus is, then that's when we have them come. Okay, so if we don't have anything, um, you can call, I'm done. We can call for adjournment.
Mayor Pro Tim, one thing before you do that, you, you perfectly, you should, you know, you've been asking for a consensus. Now, each councilperson should tell you whether they're in favor of that or not. That's all you've asked. So
I know.
I think you should poll them then and ask them if they're in favor of it.
Okay, but that's what I do. Okay, Councilman Shaw, are you in favor of having Plant Moran come in and do a presentation for us in the city? That let us know where our finances are?
Well, you should, you should already know my answer. I mean, you know, absolutely. You know, we, 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 we've been over this before. I mean, it, it shouldn't be a problem. I don't even see, you know, you know, absolutely, without a question of a doubt. And I spend, I spend my time with, uh, Mr. Green myself, so is, you know, we want that transparency. Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, thank you, thank you. Councilman Shaw? I'm sorry, Councilman Chisholm?
I'm all on board.
Okay, you on board, okay. Councilwoman Watley?
Definitely, yes.
All right, Councilwoman Washington?
Yes.
Okay, and Councilman Williams?
Okay, I'm, I'm not gonna vote on that until this time I find out the cost factor.
Okay, well, okay, so, um, there are one, two, three, four, and five me. So that's five to one right now. So I would like for those who are in favor to, um, contact the city clerk and give a date and then we'll go from there.
Okay, Mayor?
Yes.
Pro Tim, just one more thing. This was not a vote.
No, it was a consensus.
Right, and we are not, because we can't abstain from voting on anything. This was not a vote. So you wanna probably make that clear.
Yeah, it was just a consensus. Thank you, thank you for that. Okay, so, um, if everybody is done, we can call for an adjournment.
Don't move.
Support. All right. Do we need a roll call on this or we can just say goodbye?
Let's just say goodbye.
Clerk was muted, we couldn't hear.
Yeah, City Clerk? She's still muted. Unmute yourself.
No, we can all agree to adjourn.
All right, good, good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.